Hey, would you go look at the budget and let me know?
No.
All right. Can everybody hear me? We all good? All right, we're gonna roll. Uh, the call to order the regular meeting in the Perry Municipal Authority, uh, June fifteenth, year 2020, at six fifteen, roll call, please.
Hold on.
Here.
Bond.
Here.
Deal back.
Here.
Hey, Hearn.
Here.
Marshall. Marshall. White. White. Moral.
Here.
Wines. Wines.
She was here a second ago.
I'm here. It wouldn't work.
Strelor.
Uh, here. I do declare a quorum, uh, invocation this evening by Brian Ahern.
Hi, guys, if you'll pray with me. Heavenly Father, we come together tonight to serve our community, to use our resources wisely and well, to represent all members of our community fairly, and to make decisions and promote the common good. We recognize our responsibility to the past and the future and the rights and needs of both individuals and the community. As trusted servants, Father, we seek blessings on our deliberations and on our efforts here tonight. May we act wisely and well, and we give all glory to you. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Brian, I appreciate that. Uh, first item on the agenda is the consent agenda, there's one item there for approval.
Motion to approve, this is Ahern.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Hold on.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Deal back.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Moral.
Yes.
Wine.
Yes.
Strelor.
Yes, thank you. Item four, comments from those assembled pertaining to the items on the PMA agenda. Seeing none, we'll move to item five, proclamation accommodations or reports inquired by the governing body. Authority members, any questions?
I don't know if I can say this here, but since we don't have a spot on the agenda, I was just gonna bring up, I don't know if anybody had noticed, but our our COVID nineteen cases over the last few days have doubled, and we have seven new cases here in town. And just thought I'd make everyone aware on the council.
Uh, that is true, Derek, but they're not here in town.
Well, county, sorry.
Yeah, county.
I don't know exactly where they reside, but in our county.
Yeah. Thank you for bringing that up though, Derek.
Yep.
Anything else, authority members? Uh, if not, we'll move on to item six and seven, items six and seven are exactly the same thing. Uh, Bryce Jones trying to make an extra dollar, putting that item six there, but it's basically the same thing as item seven, so we're gonna skip over six and move to seven. Consider approval of resolution number twenty twenty dash oh two of the trustees, is Perry Municipal Authority adopting and improving its FY, uh, twenty 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 one budget for the PMA, and appropriating the revenues for the stated purposes as contained in the budget, directing the chairman, general manager, chief financial officer, and secretary to take any and all additional actions as may be required for the implementation, uh, of this budget. We do have Mr. Meacham with us this evening. Uh, Russ, would you like to talk to the authority members about the, uh, budget?
Yeah, I, I think, I think we probably need to start off with one big item, um, that, that has come up. Um, and I don't know that the, necessarily the, the commission knows, um, exactly what happened, but last week, we received notice on our health insurance, that we will not, um, be able to participate in still our collaborative care. Um, which is kind of a shock, um, you know, whenever we, we've done in the planning stages, we've gone through everything, anticipating what that number was gonna be, um, and kind of at the last minute, we've been hit with, with a pretty big issue. Um, you know, just, just kind of out of reference for, for what, what we're talking about. Whenever we first, um, let, whenever we first implemented, um, the collaborative care, and when we went to that model, we saved about two hundred thousand dollars a year in expense. Um, and not being able to participate in collaborative care again this next year, you know, we were gonna have a small increase, um, but we budgeted all that, worked it into our numbers, um, everything was good to go. But now we've had to go back out for bits and, um, or quotes at this point, and we've been working, um, trying to get some numbers together. Dixie, I, I know has worked tirelessly along with Christie, trying to get those numbers together, trying to get something. As of today, we do not have new health insurance numbers. Um, what, what does that mean for us? We can adopt this budget as it is, if that's what you all choose to do, and that's how you choose to move forward. Um, it is a budget that is in compliance. Um, we will have to make supplemental adjustments, um, and we will have some decisions that we have to make related to health insurance as we move forward. So, um, that, I, I need to put that on the forefront of, of the budget situation, because I, depending on how you all want to proceed, will depend on a lot of the things that we do with this budget tonight. Here's what I do know, we have to adopt a budget by the twenty third of June, even if it's not our final budget, um, which, as you know, we'll do budget amendments like we always do, matter of fact, tonight, we have budget amendments on there, so we can amend a budget. So we can adopt and go forward with this, or we need to put this aside, um, see what we do, what we can now, adopt something by at least the twenty third of this month, which gives us a week from, when, week from tomorrow, I think, um, to adopt, or we have to turn around and, um, and then just go, go blank on, on this, and just say, hey, we're gonna adopt this budget, knowing that it's going to have adjustments coming in the future as soon as we have health insurance. Now, speaking about the health insurance side, we probably will still have to have a to approve the health insurance unless you all, and, well, we don't even have it on the agenda tonight, to, to give blanket approval for, um, for Larry to sign, sign a new health contract. So, we're gonna have to have another special meeting, um, at some point this month, just to approve health insurance. So, will it be before the twenty third? I don't know. So, that, those are kind of the predicaments that we have, let's stop at that point and open it up for some comments and questions, and then we'll, we'll go back to talking about the budget.
I'm glad you brought that up, Russ, because I was gonna let the council know that if we don't adopt it tonight, we have, if we do something next week, we have to have a special meeting for that.
I, I think my my recommendation would be to move forward as is. Um, I, I think, you know, for, uh, quotes for healthcare, I, I'd be surprised if you get it in in the next five days or so. You know, we've done amendments before, and we'll have to make adjustments according to when they, how they come back, but I say we don't put everything on hold just because of health insurance.
Well, what, one thing it is, you know, the, the other thing that is gonna put on hold a little bit is the contracts with the unions, um, you know, because in there, we have some health provisions also, so, but health insurance is gonna be the driving force of what holds up this budget, but no, Brian, you're right, we can, we can move forward with everything else and, and adopt those budgets as, or amendments as needed.
But we do have a pretty big potential unknown on what that's gonna cost us, that's the part that's rough.
Yes, it is, it is a significant, uh, what I'm anticipating to be a significant number, um, you know, uh, all, I've been shocked by health insurance in the past, but, um, knowing, knowing what our, knowing what our out-of-pocket exposure was this year, um, and, and what our experience is gonna look like to those quoting, we are going to be, I, I don't anticipate it being, um, any, any type of the savings over what we have now, only an increased net number.
Well, the nice part is, Russ, you deal with enough municipalities that you should have some kind of idea what that's gonna look like, correct?
Yes, and, and I will tell you from, from our overall numbers that we were seeing, um, we're, we're gonna get about a hundred and seventy-five to maybe two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar increase expenses, what I'm anticipating.
Any reason why they're so late letting us know?
I believe, go ahead, Russ, I'm sorry.
No, no, um, we, we kind of almost found out backdoor on, on the situation. A matter of fact, we, we received, uh, Bryce received a phone call, um, from Tonka Wall saying, have, have they dropped the ball on you all, or something to that effect? And, um, we're like, what are you talking about? And, um, so we made a few phone calls and, and found out that, that that was, that the situation was, um, they, they do not have, they will, Stillwater will still offer the plan of contracted rates at their facilities. Our issue is, what do we do for the secondary coverage for anything that happens outside of the Stillwater network? Um, so that's really what our concern is. Um, whenever we try to figure out what we're gonna do on that part, there is just no guarantee to get us a, a, a contract, um, the highway to health, uh, you know, is, is, is what, what we're talking about. If you were in Oklahoma City and had to go to the ER, you know, my, my daughter's playing softball this weekend, she gets hurt, we have to go to an ER in Oklahoma City, that's out of network, you know, our plan would be picking up significant costs, because we don't have a contract directly with those facilities. So that, that's kind of what our problem is, and, and that's what we're trying to mitigate, and Stillwater had that last year, but they weren't able, our, my understanding is they weren't able to get that renewed this year, and so now we have this predicament that we're in.
Well, I've heard they're, they're offering us, so they're not offering us the same, different prices that Stillwater, that they've been, uh, offering the, the next two years, just a difference in reference prices that would be a part of any self-insurance program, for example, is, is fifty thousand there a year, so even, uh, you know, they, they, they're not only not doing the collaborative health plan, that was the first bomb, uh, well, actually, the first bomb was that, that, that I heard, that they aren't gonna be as involved, that changed to Dixie, and then the second one is that they're not offering Stillwater collaborative plan, and then the third bomb is that they're not even offering other reference prices that they had been offering, uh, you know, last year and the year before, these prices are gonna be up. And no, uh, we found out June eighth, and yes, that is very late.
I think it's Mike.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah, Bryce, we can hardly hear you, I mean, we can hear you make out what your name is. Get that earwax out. There you go, that's, that's great. Yeah, it sounds great. If you could sound great. You're muted, Bryce. Can you unmute him? I guess he's done. Okay, I'm assuming Bryce is done. Any other questions, uh, for Russ, or me, or Bryce, or Larry?
Most of that was hard to pick out, but I think it was basically that there's more hits than just the one.
Yeah. And Derek, you brought a good point forward about, we don't know, you know, how much that expense is gonna be, but regardless, we gotta endure, you know?
No, I, I understand, it's just a, and I agree with Councilman Ahern too, that we probably need to move forward. It's just hard to approve something when we don't know exactly how much we're gonna lose on this budget.
Yeah.
Well, and right now, there's really not anything in our budget, we've cut everything out that we can, right, Russ, and that was even beforehand, because of the, the COVID and the break in taxes that we're not gonna have, so we don't have much that we've been, that we can cut to even help already in the, at a loss, right?
Correct, you know, the, the numbers we're looking at, at least from an operational standpoint, you know, I mean, we're nine hundred thousand dollar deficit that we're budgeting for next year. Um, you know, mind you, we're, we're across our fingers and hope that those numbers don't come in where they are. I will tell you, as we get to the financial report, and whenever we start talking about what, what we had, we're about twelve percent down. Our June deposit was about twelve percent down from our June deposit the prior year. Um, you know, so, in, in our normal formula, you know, if we budgeted those numbers out, we would say, hey, that's eighty-five, that, we'd use an eighty-five percent number as, as our projection, and then to go conservative, we'd add ten percent number to that. Um, you know, so really, what we built into this budget, um, is probably right on line with the conservative number that we would expect. If we collect all those numbers, and if, if that sales tax comes in at a hundred percent of twenty twenties sales tax number, we're probably looking at about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars more money. Um, that still is only a, a chink in, in the armor related to the deficit that we've actually found ourselves in. So, um, you're right, we, we've cut out expenses, we've cut out all the capital outlay, we're meeting the debt service requirements. Um, really, the only other place to go at this point is, is related to personnel, um, and, and what we do on those personnel reserves and personnel, um, furloughs and those kinds of things. Um, I think the overall discussion and the, and the overall intent at this point is to see where the first quarter goes, you know, I mean, Larry and I have talked, you know, I mean, we're, we've talked Plan B and Plan C, you know, as we get into the year, if these numbers do not come out, um, if we end up behind the eight ball further, we've talked about what we need to do, um, where, where some of those cuts are gonna have to happen. Our suggestion is, we, we do have reserves in place. Um, we have been physically responsible over the last decade plus, um, in trying to set aside some reserves year in and year out. Um, this year, to start the year off, we're gonna suggest, let's eat into those reserves a little bit before we jump into the personnel issues, and jump into what potential cuts and potential items we may need to adjust there in order to balance our budget. Um, so let's see how this year starts off, once we see what we get in July, and then August, and probably September's deposit. When we have that second meeting in September, we'll be sitting down talking about, what do we really need to do? Um, what, all right, we know we're into our reserves X dollars, now what does that mean? Hopefully, it doesn't mean, you know, a projected out number of nine hundred thousand dollar loss, hopefully, it'll give us maybe a, a reasonable projected loss, and maybe even some hope as to what those final numbers will be for the year. So, um, at this point, th- this is one of the hardest budgets, I, I think, budget seasons that we've ever been through. It's one of the hardest times to try to predict what's gonna happen because of timing and because of where everything falls. But with the reserves that we have and the things that are going on, it's kind of our suggestion, let's move forward with this budget. Let's see where we are whenever we get to September, August, September, we'll have a much better idea, and we'll have a much better feeling on maybe what changes really need to be made.
I think we should put an item on the bu- for budget regions, an item on the next agenda that Russ and Bryce have to, like, take delivery of everything that they need here, pick up groceries, and travel back home. Help that sales tax dollar.
Hey, I, I'll tell you what, guys, it, you, it's been kind of an interesting experiment, you know, looking at the sales tax across all the municipalities. Now, we track over fifty municipalities that we work with, month in and month out, and looking at their sales tax dollars. We had three communities that actually had an increase in their sales tax in the month, deposit in the month of June, versus the prior year and versus the prior month, which, which is almost an anomaly, you wouldn't think that that could happen during a shutdown. But whenever we start talking about leakage, and whenever we start talking about what we're losing to other communities, um, these three communities, where we went back and looked, it was those core services, it was the main pieces of their budget, it was the main pieces of their operations, that, that they kept in town. Um, it kind of gave them a glimpse of, man, if we could capture this every month, how much better off we would be. So, it kind of, kind of an interesting situation, um, for, for those three communities that we're working with. Unfortunately, Perry wasn't one of them.
Thanks for the good news. Well, council, or authority members, what would you like to do with the budget for the, uh, municipal authority this evening?
Was there any more items, Russ, you, you kind of said that you were gonna pick the top one out, but was there others that you needed to add that you need to be aware of?
No, no, nothing big, I, I mentioned the sales tax, and, and that was kind of, I ended up incorporating that into, into this first one, but, you know, the sales tax, you know, coming in this month, June deposit, um, twelve percent down, um, based on kind of the projections, I think our sales tax projection is really where it needs to be, um, at least for a conservative budget standpoint. Again, always subject to amendments, as, as Ahern has said, but something that we need to remember. Um, no, number two, um, the, the other thing that I'd point out, right now, our hotel motel tax is projected to be only enough to cover our debt service. So, all of the other economic development expenses that we're having, um, it, whatever you read the contract, whatever you look, you know, we, we say we're gonna pay those out of hotel motel funds, we do not have surplus hotel motel funds to pay all of the economic development activities that are in this budget. So those will be coming out of sales tax and/or the way you wanna look at it, to transfer from the PMA in order to cover operations. Um, so that, that is, that piece. The other thing is, because of the decreased sales tax, um, we will be eating into, um, think, think back to the dam project, and whenever we talked about the extra sales taxes over the years that we've accumulated for, for late mercury debt of that one and a quarter cent sales tax, we will be eating into that sales tax in the tune of about a hundred and forty thousand dollars this year, just to cover the required debt service. Now, we have a million dollars setting in that account, but we eat in it a hundred and forty thousand dollars, and then we take the money that we were going to, that now we're gonna pull out to use for valves and actuators, until that comes over, we're eating significantly into that, um, in, into that reserve money that we have set aside for long-term debt service on, on the, um, late mercury debt. So, tho- those are just the, the keys that I wanna make sure you, you guys say, hey, i- it's now on video, Tyson's saving this forever, so we'll have it. Russ did say it, and at least brought it up to our attention, because I don't want you to just think that, oh, it's, it's hunky-dory, everything's gonna be good. Now, there's, there's some things in this budget that, that we can survive. I do not want to be in this position next year, for sure. Um, we, we will change this in the fall, um, before we get too far into the year.
And to clarify that, I, I believe, Russ, and, and when I say this, speak up and tell me where I'm wrong, but I've, since, I feel like we still have a few newer people, haven't been through too many budget cycles. We have several different reserve buckets, if you will, but some of those are earmarked and can only be used for certain reasons, like that last one you talked about on mercury, that, that we are able to use those for the actuators, but that's not a reserve, that million dollars isn't a reserve that we can use anywhere.
That is correct. That is correct. It has to be used on, on the water system projects.
Right.
Anything else, authority members?
I make a motion to, uh, approve the resolution twenty 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 oh two, as presented.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Hold on.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Deal back.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Moral.
Yes.
Wines.
Yes.
Strelor.
Yes, thank you. Item eight, consider approval of amendments to the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty PMA budget. Mr. Meacham?
You guys have your budget amendments, I should have got sent out this afternoon, um, I apologize for the delay, I'm not going to insult you by reading to you, um, but the net change to the PMA, by the time you factor in the revenue decreases that we took in, because our utility cells weren't what they were, we had cooler summers, we didn't have as much electric cells, and the associated expenses that come in is a net change to the PMA of zero, um, but because we always bring these kind of amendments back, um, you guys get PMA amendments on here to approve tonight.
May I make a motion, this is Ahern to approve the amendment that's presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Hey, who was that with the second?
Mike Moral.
Okay, thank you. Hey, Coldern.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Deal back.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Moral.
Yes.
Wines.
Yes.
Strelor. Stroller.
Yes, thank you, members. Uh, item number nine, is there any new business that needs to become before the PMA this evening? Seeing none, we'll move to item ten, motion on the adjournment, please.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, Deal Beck.
Roll call, please.
Calderon.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Deal back.
Yes.
Ahearn.
Yes.
Moral.
Yes.
Wines.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes. Jamie's delayed this evening. Uh, are you ready, Dixie?
Yes.
Okay, I'd call order the regular meeting in the City Council of the City of Perry on June fifteenth uh, twenty twenty at six forty. Roll call, please.
Calderon.
Here.
Bond.
Here.
Deal back.
Here.
Ahearn.
Here.
Marshall. White. Moral.
Here.
Wines.
Here.
Stroller.
Here. Uh, thank you. I do declare a coram present this evening. Item number one is the consent agenda. Uh, council, uh, there's several items on there to look over.
Make the motion to approve all items listed A through K on the consent agenda.
Moral, second.
Any further discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Calderon.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Deal back.
Yes.
Ahearn.
Yes.
Moral.
Yes.
Wines.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes, thank you. Item number four, is there any comments from those uh assembled pertaining to the items on the city agenda this evening? Seeing none, we will move to item five, proclamations, commendations, reports, inquiries by the governing body. All right, we'll move to item six, the city managers' report, monthly update.
Thank you, mayor. Um, this weekend BMAC's gonna have another tournament, this will be the third tournament of the season. This is looking to be big. This will be our third big tournament uh of the season. Uh, thirty-five teams have entered for this weekend's tournament, teams from Stillwater, Edmund, Tulsa, Oklahoma City, Ponca City, Enid, Broken Arrow and a few small towns. So, we're excited about that um opportunity to showcase our our athletic facility and also our town. Uh, today, Senior Citizens Center added Monday and Friday to their op open agenda, uh, open schedule, rather. That uh means now we're open Monday, Tuesday, Thursday and Friday. Um, and July first, they'll open on Wednesday. They have no selected programs, they're just open for folks that want to come and and uh be together, play cards or whatever it may be and uh experience also social distancing. Um, Michelle McCrery and I spoke about this this morning and she went through all the um sanitation items that she's doing on a regular basis. Um, someone comes in, a patron comes in, plays cards, soon as they get up, she comes and and cleans off the chair and 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 like like that. So, she's doing her due diligence to make certain that uh our patrons are safe uh when they come in and safe when they leave. Um, this approach of slow reopening is working well for the senior citizens and the library. I spoke with both of them today, both um uh library director Pam Rigg and also, as I said, Michelle McCrery. And they are eager to get back to full full schedule, but they do like this slow reopening. So, that's the uh, that's the process we've been using for those two particular facilities and we'll continue to do that till July one. Uh, council, any questions?
Yeah, I've got one. Um, I've been told, at least I haven't been there, but a little concerned that the ball field, that that people are using the bleachers and aren't following the the guidelines that we set out. Do you have any update on that or how that's been going, Larry?
Uh, I visited both tournaments and I did see a a few folks on the bleachers, but they were separated. Uh, it looks like they were separated uh and together in in families. Um, I'll speak to Lee about that. Um, there is really just so much that we can do, but uh a aside from just carting off the bleachers, uh, and I'll speak with him about doing that.
Yeah, I get it. I just, I just, I had a citizen that was concerned with the gatherings on the bleachers and and things. So, I thought I would report that to you and see if there was anything we could do.
Uh, thank you.
I know Stillwater pulled all bleachers from their fields, but.
Um, not sure if we can do that. We do have limited staff, they have a lot more folks, but.
I'm not suggesting it, I'm just saying that.
It would look a little different, but we'll, I'll I'll talk to to Lee about that. And I did see a number of folks bring their own lawn chairs and uh and experience social distancing for uh that way. And of course, a lot of folks were out in the cars.
It's just, it's just my opinion and uh sometimes I have a crazy opinion. But uh, I've not been to the tournaments, but I have been to my grandson's uh baseball games that are that are going on out there. Uh, and personally, uh, this, what I have seen is I have seen a couple of people in the bleachers, but it's, I know we set a policy of no bleacher use, but it doesn't matter whether they're in the bleachers or they're in their lawn chairs, people are stacked in that place. I I personally, I mean, it's not gonna make any difference if they're in the bleachers or they're in their lawn chairs. They're just stacked on top of each other and I'm sure those tournaments have been way worse than the little league games I've been to. Uh, the other thing I wanted to say was, in the in the future, I know we've talked about uh expansion out there at the ball field. Uh, I talked to several people down at Brahms that that were coming from the BMAC tournament and uh, man, they didn't have anything but great things to say about our baseball field. Uh, one of the best fields they go to all year long, uh, they were appreciative, uh, they were a group of uh fourteen under kids. They said it's hard to find tournaments of that age and they were really appreciative of of us having that tournament with that age group. The thing I was gonna say is we've got three or four people showing up in motor homes, uh, travel trailers. Uh, you know, when we expand, we may wanna look at the opportunity to put some RV spots out there. And maybe possibly we could rent it out, you know, other than uh baseball times, but I would think we'd wanna reserve it for the baseball games, but maybe in the winter or something, someone's passing by, we'd have an opportunity. But uh, I was talking to Lee when I was out there and he said it's amazing how many people ask for those, so.
It is on our expansion plan, as rough as it may be, but that's something that we do need to consider, certainly. Thank you. Thank you, council.
All right, we will move on to item number seven. I'm most tired of hearing him talk, but that's all right. Chief Financial Officer's report. You're out doing Bryce tonight.
For crying out loud, as many items as I've had on the agenda, mayor, I mean, come on, I only spoke like ten minutes. I, that means I've got at least thirty minutes, cause I get ten minutes an item, don't I?
Yep. Anything you need, man, that's all we care about.
Yeah, perfect, all right. Actually, guys, we're we're coming up towards the end of the year, I really don't have that much exciting to say about financials um this month. Yeah, you guys have your your cash sheet in in front of you um that you received. Whenever you're looking at your financials, you know, we're looking ninety-two, ninety-three percent as far as expend expenditures go. We do have budget amendments coming um on the next couple of items to take care of um re-appropriating a couple of things that that we were out of whack on. Um, nothing that is significant or of concern. Matter of fact, our budget amendments are actually gonna increase our fund balance in the general fund. So, that, I always like to do that, you know, every once in a while, say, hey, we estimated revenues, or estimated revenues conservative and expenses conservative, now we're gonna get a little bit of a carryover for the end of the year. So, um, unless there are specific, oh, let me hit, um, hotel motel was fourteen thousand dollars this month. Um, so again, eighteen thousand dollars is our number that we're looking for. Um, so that that number is is down a little bit, but overall, um, I don't really have anything bad to say about this year. Um, matter of fact, glad that we've made it through the last couple of months. Um, hopefully, looking forward to a much better June, July and August um to start off this next fiscal year.
Well, I'm really happy, Russ, with what you said about the hotel motel tax. I mean, it'd always be better, but Walgo, you said it's at least paying our debt services. So, that's a plus that we're not having to reach down into the coffers and do that, too.
Correct.
And that's with one hotel down. Uh, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Mayor, if I may.
You bet.
Hotel uh Inn Express is in receivership. Um, not sure that they're gonna open or reopen. We have talked to uh some potential buyers this past week, so it is getting some interest. That's all I have.
Anything else, council?
That's positive, thanks, Larry, but.
I'm sorry, Jamie, what?
That's positive news, so people aren't interested in it.
True. Item eight, consider approval of resolution number twenty twenty dash oh nine of the City Council of the City of Perry, Oklahoma, adopting and providing for its two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one budget for the general fund and the other budgets and appropriating the revenues for the stated purposes as contained in the budgets, directing the mayor, the city manager, the chief financial officer and the city clerk to take any and all additional actions as may be required for the implementation of the budget. Uh, council, this is the same thing we passed in the PMA, just on the city side.
Mayor, I'll I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty dash zero nine.
As presented.
Yes.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Calderon. Calderon.
Is Derek still with us? He says he's still there.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, we got you.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Deal back.
Yes.
Ahearn.
Yes.
Moral.
Yes.
Wines.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes. Thank you. Consider approval of amendments to the twenty nineteen, the twenty twenty general fund and other budgets. Russ, this is the same stuff we were dealing with Walgo, wasn't it?
Yeah, exact, exact same stuff. Um, as I mentioned, as I mentioned just a little bit, it is a net increase in fund balance of about a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars overall. Um, so, uh, most of that is because we're getting reimbursement on some of the grant dollars that we had. Um, we expended some dollars, um, and we're getting some grant um money back in on some of those. So, it net increase for the general fund of about a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars to end the year.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Calderon.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Deal back.
Yes.
Ahearn.
Yes.
Moral.
Yes.
Wines.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes. Okay, item number ten, consider approval of pay requests from Oklahoma Department of Transportation on the Perry Sidewalk Project Phase One. Uh, TAP two fifty-two E TP matching funds of a hundred and nine thousand, eight hundred and two thousand, I mean, I'm sorry, eight hundred and two dollars, eighty-two cents requested associated with change orders two, three and four, plus construction inspection related to the pedestrian and bike improvements. Larry, do you know anything about this item?
This is, this is real close to our original hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar uh cost that we were supposed to, that's on our side. Um, that's about all I know about that, sir.
Is it, is it one hundred percent complete at this point?
You know, we were talking about that earlier today with with Bryce and Dixie and um you can read it both ways, you can read it that it does and you can also read the um the document from from ODOT that says it doesn't. So, we're gonna look into that. But um, this at least takes care of that first one and it, the first one was was originally a hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars. So, this is a bit less, a little bit less than than what we had anticipated for as being the first um, the first phase.
Yeah.
Bryce, you might have something different on that one, we talked about that again this morning.
No, I think that's correct.
We're saying this is phase one we're talking about and so phase two, uh, I believe it's it's pretty close to completed if it's not also.
Well, there was some some talk about the fact that that the the request for payment from ODOT really involved, included one and two. But we really haven't been able to work that that out yet for certainty.
What would you like to do with item ten, council?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the pay request from the Oklahoma Department of Transportation for the Perry Sidewalk Project Phase One.
Second, Moral.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Calderon.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Deal back.
Yes.
Ahearn.
Yes.
Moral.
Yes.
Wines.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes. Item number eleven, consider approval uh for Gary May and Tom Mack, I mean, sorry, Tom Davis, I apologize, to conduct the fireworks display at the Perry Lake on July fourth, twenty twenty. There's a something we have on the agenda every year about this time. Uh, they go on the backside of the lake and most people from here know they put on a giant fireworks show and they just asked for our approval.
Motion to approve.
Second, Wine.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Calderon.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Deal back.
Yes.
Ahearn.
Yes.
Moral.
Yes.
Wines.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes. Uh, item twelve, advertised for competitive bids for demolition and removal of dilapidated building located at seven thirty Holly. Uh, this is a house that that was given to the City of Perry and uh I was led to believe that uh there was gonna be some interest in selling the house or restoring the house, some, some something. But uh, Larry, you may have the report on this, uh, what's going on?
Certainly, we were hoping that uh an interested party would come up and and restore this uh historic building, this historic house, originally, I'm told, it was part of Bankers Row. Uh, so we really tried to kind of drag our feet to see if we could continue to get some interest. Um, it's to the point now where we don't have any. Um, and David Payne has been out there looking around and and has helped a number of times drain out the the basement with six, eight feet of water in there. Um, and it's just to the point now where it's, it's, it's best that we we demolish it. I did wanna mention that that I normally have three priorities for bringing this to council, especially if it's not budgeted, which this is not. Uh, the first priority is our our is are juveniles entering in the unsafe structure and playing in, that's case in this one. Uh, secondly, is there vague vagrants around? We haven't seen that. Uh, thirdly, isn't on a major thoroughfare and that that Eighth Street does get, and Holly Street does get a lot of traffic. But the biggest concern is the juveniles and so that's the reason why we put it on here. Uh, unfortunately, it's, 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 it's sad, but um we need to move on with this, mayor.
Uh, you know, if two things I wanna say is that normally, we just go tear down a house and we have to put a lien against a piece of property and we really don't have anything. This one's a little different, I mean, we actually own the, we own the property, so we're gonna. So we're going to demolish the property, but we still own, physically own the piece of land that sits on. So we will have something when we get done. Number two, have we been allowing anyone in this house, Larry, to go in and take things out of the house and get what they think might be of significance? Anything like that going on?
We did have a couple. Todd Payne offered to clean it out. If we supplied the dumpster, and we did, and that's going to save us considerable amount of money on this, this demolition. So it's, it's cleaned out as far as I know right now. We went through three dumpsters. The third one is still out there right now. But according to David, there were electronics down in the basement, but you could tell what, how, how good they were since they've been under six or eight feet of water.
All right.
So it saved us a lot of money.
Did we ever have anybody that like came and looked at it and just said it wasn't worth it or anything like that? Or did we ever have any interest at all?
But interest from the pains. They have been rehabbing a couple of houses on their own that they picked up over the last couple of years, and they really had interest in this one. David, especially because of what it meant as far as the, the significance, the historical significance to that particular section of town. I say historically, it's not a historically designated house, but it, it does have some significance to the history of Perry. It, it, part of this problem is it took us probably a year, the better part of a year, maybe a little bit over that, to get this house from the previous owner. There.
Yep. Okay, counsel, what you want to do, we'll just move on.
Mayor, I don't think we have a lot of choice left, so I'll go ahead and make the motion to advertise for competitive bids for demolition and removal of the building at seven thirty.
Moral will second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Hold on.
Yes.
Bond. Bond.
Yes.
Deal back.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Moral.
Yes.
Wines.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes, thank you. Item thirteen, consider appointment of an ad hoc recommendation only committee to review the discussion on selecting an engineering firm and take other action as deemed appropriate. Counsel, we have a, a group already together with this. We haven't done much of anything with it because of the coronavirus issue. No one really feels that comfortable getting together. I'm not even really sure no one's discussed with me why it's even on the, on the agenda this evening. Larry and Dixie and myself and Dinet Marshall was asked to be on that committee. So I would just assume move on with the committee we have, unless you guys see different.
Oh, mayor, one of the re-
You might be answering my question.
One of the reasons why we put it on the agenda was because we're beginning to get to the end of phase four and phase three, which has required the, the involvement of our current water engineer. And so if, if those three, those two projects finish and end and he's done with them, and something else pops up, we're at ad hoc to go out and find out whoever we can pick. And I think that the council method or reasoning for this was to see and pick the right firm, our firms.
Well, I, I agree a hundred percent with you, because this has already been on the agenda. We've already picked this.
Okay, my mistake.
So if that's, that's all we got, we'll just move to item fourteen. Item fourteen is consider ordinance number twenty twenty dash ten of the city council of the city of Perry of Oklahoma, providing for amendment of chapter eighteen of the Perry Municipal Code twenty twenty by the amendment of section five dash one oh six entiling building permit and other fees providing for new building permit, plan review, inspection, and other fees for commercial, special use, industrial use constructions, providing for a residential plan review fee and a residential reinspection fee by the amendment of section five, let me see where I'm at here, by the amendment of section five dash two oh four C by the amendment of section five dash three oh six by the amendment of section five dash four oh four C deleting all fees for commercial use and structures, providing for repealer savings codification severability, penalty, and declare an emergency. Okay. Brian Henry, I believe, is, is on with us this evening. He, he's our inspector, one of our code officials. And he's been doing a lot of work on this. Brian, if you're with us, would you care to address this for us, please?
Sure. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay, first thing I just want to say, mayor, I'm really proud of you that you made it through that.
Almost messed it up.
I would not have done so well. Okay, so a couple months back, we had brought something similar to the council, and you guys had tabled it for, I don't remember how long, but you guys tabled it and told us that you wanted us to bring it back to you to, to review this again at another point. And so in that timeframe, what we did was some of the, the recommended changes that we were, we were bringing to the table for the residential side, we took those out. The only things that we had left in there were the residential plan review, so for building a new home and a reinspection fee, because up to this point, we really haven't had one. So for people that were calling us out to do the same inspection four or five times, you know, those were all just coming in, you know, kind of out of pocket, out of time. And we were, we were losing money on that deal, so we were, we were bringing that back, hoping to try and recoup a little bit of that. But as, it's no secret to the council, right now we are very reliant on a third party inspector for all of our commercial and doing our residential plan review. And the city at, at the current time is eating every single dollar for that. And it's just standard practice throughout the rest of the state. Well, throughout, pretty much just this entire practice that the builder usually gets that rolled into their permit cost. So we were bringing that back to the council for consideration to have that changed.
Brian, thanks for the explanation. I, I did have a question along the same lines of what you were talking about. Because we were, you said we're still at this point relying on a third party, but weren't we trying to move away from that? And where's that stand as far as the training and, and getting, getting away from the third party for those commercial pieces?
Sure. So Jesse has stepped pretty fully into doing all of our residential inspection. You know, I mean, he's really only been in the field since December. That was his first taste of it, other than appliance installation. So he had a little bit of fuel, gas background. But he's, he's coming along really well. He's preparing to take his first certification test, actually, in the next few weeks. Our, our goal by end of twenty twenty, somewhere in the winter of twenty twenty-one, is to have him and all of his residential certifications done. It's going to be a little bit before he's able to get all of his commercial done as well. It's, it's, that's a lot of study, and that's, that's eight certifications all in all. And then if you add in the plan review on top of that, that's about another, I want to say that's another six certifications right there that he has to study and be prepared for and all of that. So it's, it's no small task to take on. As of right now, he hasn't, he hasn't passed or taken any of them. Like I said, he's been in training. But he has taken all of the residential side away from, from the third party inspector, so we're making some positive headway in that.
Okay, thank you. How's the Guthrie piece going along?
I'm sorry?
The Guthrie piece, wasn't there some kind of training with Guthrie for him?
There was, there was, and then COVID nineteen happened, and everything just kind of fell off the end of the world. As to my knowledge, Guthrie, I think Monday, they just actually opened back up to where Jesse's going to be able to go back over there and start training with, I believe, Mike Zimmerman's his name.
Yeah, we appreciate Guthrie and their willingness from the city manager and also Mr. Zimmerman to come in and let, let Jesse shadow them. And also Mike Zimmerman has come over and, and done a little inspection here, but you're correct. Derek, that's what the plan was, was to move forward and bring all of this in-house, and I'm, I'm real pleased with, with Brian and also Jesse. They're, they're doing everything they possibly can to speed this up as much as possible.
Where are we at? Go ahead, Derek.
I was just going to say thank you. I just wanted to find out the status of how that was going.
I think at one point, this is a question for Larry, at one point, we were going to phase out Craig, Mr. Higley, over a six-month period. Where are we at on that project?
Probably would have been a lot faster and a lot farther along if the virus hadn't come along, because everything that, that, that was physically, a, a, a face-to-face training basically went away. And it took probably four months for most of the organizations that, that do this training to, to get together and do virtual. They've done some, Brian and also Jesse have done some virtual training, but we're getting, I, I think we're making as fast as progress as we possibly can. And that is certainly, we're going to be, Mr. Higley's going to be here doing commercial at least until the junior high is up. I don't think it's right for the, the junior high nor for, for Craig to bring somebody else in and, and right in the middle of the project. So we're going to, we're going to keep Craig around for that long.
Correct me if I'm wrong, though, Larry, from what I heard from, or at least thought I heard Brian say is we're looking at possibly another year to get all the certifications complete and stuff for commercial. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct. Brian?
Yes.
It, it does take a long time. It, it's not as simple as, as it sounds.
I wasn't trying to make it sound simple. I didn't mean it like that. Sorry. I was just trying to make sure we understood the timeline.
That's okay. We'd love to have it as fast as possible. That, that's the goal. I know for all three of us concerned. There.
Counsel, what would you like to do with this ordinance? I think this is the second time possibly we've seen this.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Can I point out one more thing, and I, I think the council has it. The, the attachment that is in their packet, there is an item, item H that says annual fire protection and life safety inspection. Do you guys see?
Item G, it's item G.
Oh, is it? Okay. If this is the same one that I'm just, we were discussing, because it's still in my packet, and it was supposed to be removed. Our fire department actually does that at no cost to the citizens. So if you guys approve this, you would be approving that without that. I know Lieutenant, or Captain Biswell, excuse me, I forgot he got a promotion, was wanting, was, made sure that that was included in here.
That did bring up one more question I had. I was about to make a motion on this, but hey, Brian, on the, on the hood, there's a piece in there about the hoods. Right?
Okay.
Yeah, the kitchen, the hood, yeah. I would assume that's all commercial, right, we're talking about there?
Yeah.
Yes.
So that itself, do, does one of our guys or Higley actually go do that? Or is it just the state inspector that comes out and does that? I know some other places it's been the state inspector comes and inspects those.
No, so they, they also use a third party guy for their plan review and for their inspection. I know that Captain Biswell is preparing to get certified in those areas. The, here's, here's the downturn to that, is we used to have the state fire marshal office come in and inspect partial for us. They changed things this year, and I think Bryce can speak to this as well. But it is no longer a partial inspection. If they come in and they inspect for you, they take over the whole inspection process. So it's no longer a partial thing, and I, and I don't want to speak to a rumor, but I'm fairly certain I heard this from Fairview that now, when do they come in, if, if it's anything over a fifty percent remodel, everything in a, well, whether, it would only be commercial, everything has to be brought up to the twenty eighteen standard in a building. And so that's definitely not something that you want to get into standard practice with, if that is true.
So if I hear you correctly, what we're saying is that we will be able to do this and charge for it, and we don't want to have to call out the state inspector going forward, and we would have that ability with what we're trying.
Yes. Correct.
Yes.
And also, we can limit the number of upgrades, incorrect, Bryce? I mean, it wouldn't be like a fifty percent thing, like, like Brian is saying?
Well, we definitely want to keep control of the commercial inspections if, if we want to remain flexible with economic development projects, downtown projects, a whole number of various things. We want to keep control of those commercial inspections and not turn it over to the state fire marshal. I mean, this is actually an economic development thing. It does cost money. That's why we're trying to, if possible, you know, if this ordinance passes, to, to get some of those dollars back. But it would not be my recommendation for the state fire marshal to do commercial inspections, and, and all of my communities are moving away from that now.
Sounds, sounds good. Thank you, Bryce. Thank you, Brian. Any questions for Brian before we move on?
I'll make a motion. If we're ready.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve this as put forth.
Second, moral.
Any further discussion?
Only, only thing I'll add is I'd like us to come back and discuss it once we're doing it in-house and make sure that it all still makes sense and that we're covering ourselves.
We got a great attorney for that, too. Roll call, please.
Hold on.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Deal back.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Moral.
Yes.
Wines.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes. Motion on the emergency, please.
Motion on the emergency.
Second, moral.
Roll call, please.
Hold on.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Deal back.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Marshall. Oops. Don't guess she's shown up, moral.
Yes.
Wines.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes, thank you. Item number fifteen, consider approval of a purchase of a fifteen hundred KVA pad-mounted transformer from Wesco Distribut- Distribution for Green Farms Company in the amount of twenty-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. I did talk to Brian Henry today. He's under the impression that they have agreed to pay for this. The invoice will probably be a little more than this. There's a few more items coming with this. So this won't be an expense that we will have to endure. We'll probably have to pay for it upfront, but then we'll be reimbursed for it.
And we have that, like, under contract so that we know that we'll get paid, or how's that going to happen?
I, I don't know that. I was just talking to Brian, and he said that, that they know they're paying for it, and they've expressed that they will. So I don't know other than that, Derek. You got anything on that, Larry? You're muted. You're still muted.
Still muted, sir.
There we go.
Okay.
I, I do not. I have enough, I really don't know any, much history on this particular one, except that when we first started speaking with them, they gave us all kinds of dimensions and sizes of transformers they needed, and as it turned out, none of them are correct. So we wanted to make certain that we got this correct this time.
Bryce, is there anything that we would need to do to cover? Bryce, is there anything that we would need to do to cover ourselves on this to make sure that we get payment?
Well, apparently, they need the transformer. Yeah, I mean, before we order it, we could get a, we'd get a quick agreement for them to state that they reimburse it, but it's my understanding that they need it. I mean, they're gonna, they've got quite a electric usage out there, and they need this transformer. But, but let's, to be simple, let's just say that before we buy it, we want to get something in writing that they'll agree to reimburse us, and I'll prepare that. Okay?
And the nice part is, it says pad-mounted. We can take it home. Counsel, what would you like to do?
I'll make the motion that we approve this upon getting agreement with the company that Bryce would put forth for us.
Second, by Moral.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Dealbeck.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Moral.
Yes.
Wines.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes, thank you. Item 16. Consider approval of the purchase of a six-inch self-priming diesel engine-driven trash pump and three 10-foot sections of a hose in the amount of $29,790 from E. Pumps O.K. of Tulsa. Larry, I was understanding that you have information about this. For the council, understand that this is also, was one of our grant items from the Malzahn Foundation.
Yes, sir. That's correct. It was $30,000 that we had asked for the, for this particular project. And we had been approved. This is in the March 2020 request. And this particular model is, is what Vernon Robbins has asked for. He's researched the other two quotes and has asked for this, for this particular one. I will mention that 20, about $3,000 of the $29,790 is for hoses and discharge and flanges. And that comes up to about $2,749. So, we do have a little bit left in that. This is something that I noticed that they needed probably a year or two ago, because I attended a late-night water leak, and the little, the small pump that they had down in the hole was just barely keeping up with that, with the, with the discharge that was coming out. So, I'm real pleased and thankful to the Malzahn Foundation for getting, funding this for us, because it's certainly gonna make those kind of repairs a lot easier for our guys that, that jump in the hole. There.
Counsel?
Motion to approve.
I'll second. Ahern.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Dealbeck.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Moral.
Yes.
Wines.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes, thank you very much. Item 17. Consider approval of the contract with the Perry Chamber of Commerce for Tourism Development for 2020 and 2021. Counsel, in, under tab 17, you do have the contract. I was looking at the contract over myself today. I do believe we have, if Noel, she's still on with us, she can have a discussion with us about this, but I would be very interested knowing why there's so much marked out of the existing contract. Noel?
Yeah, I can speak on that, and I apologize. I have a five-year-old doing a fashion contest in front of me, so I'm trying not to be distracted here. And we did, we met as a board, and our contract had been amended with the city, I believe, 2017, 2018 budget. And so, the contract that we had been signing had budget numbers listed by each item of advertising, our events, and publication, membership dues. And so, when we amended that contract, we never amended our contract with the city to be approved through city council. And so, we noticed this last year, and it did get approved through city council, but we just felt that we needed to amend the budget amounts, because it still had the budget amounts at $32,400, which is what we received after our first budget cut. And so, the, the contract did not, it wasn't current with our original contract that we signed with the city manager. And so, our board just made the decision to see if we could get that amended. So, we were holding up our end with the city on what we do with the city of Perry. And if you look and, look through it, there are a lot of things that are marked through, but if you read our current contract and what we amended, they match now the same across the board. So, that, most of the information that was marked out was information that wasn't necessarily needed, or was information that we had provided to the city manager when we did our tourism contract that included advertising and other things that were in our contract.
Any questions, counsel?
Sounds like it's not really changing, Noel. It's just matching the two contracts. Correct?
Yes, Brian, that's correct. There really isn't much changing. The information that is marked through, if you read through the current contract, and if you read through what is marked out, it's stuff that does not pertain to our office in the city of Perry anymore. As far as the numbers that were listed, if you go through the contract on page, I don't know if it has the page with you guys, on page three, we used to break down individual categories of where we spent that money, and that's where I was getting the $32,400 amount. And we did change that to show the $20,000 so that it matched what we received in funding, but those numbers, we just didn't feel right having that contract show those numbers if we didn't receive the $32,400 and it was still in contract.
I'll make a motion to approve the new contract as presented.
Moral, second.
Any further discussion?
Noel, have you guys talked about your budget, if by chance, we can't have the 15th celebration?
Yes and no. I mean, obviously, that is the huge elephant that is in the room. We're getting calls daily about it. As far as we know, we are proceeding with planning and coordinating that event as far as we can. We did have discussion that the parade may look different, our vendors setup may look different, and especially with the spike in numbers that has come in this week, we want to be very cautious and safe for our community, that event. We do typically expect about 14,000 people in our community. So, we definitely don't want to do anything that jeopardizes our safety. And so, we have been in close communication. Larry and I have talked quite a bit, just what we see moving forward, and, you know, if we're able to do that event, we're going to try as much as we can, but obviously, safety of our community and everything is our first most priority.
Absolutely. And I'm mainly asking just to know, I mean, with our budget, you heard the talks that we've had earlier and how, where we're sitting with our budget. So, assuming that we all work together and we can go back and do some type of amendment if it doesn't happen in order to help for 21, but hopefully, it does go on. But, like you said, we're already starting to see some spikes, so.
Yes. And I will say, as far as, as budget goes, with our contract of coordinating Spring Fest, which we weren't able to have, and celebration, that has been a concern for our board, because that is what we're in contract with the city for. But, I think this is just such a, we're in such unprecedented times that we, we don't know what to expect. But as far as us and our role as the chamber, we've done everything we can for our community, not just our members, which is huge. And several of you have been on council long enough, you know, the membership is, is huge in the chamber. And so, we have tried to serve the community through COVID-19 and not just our members. Sorry.
Yeah, I, I think it's just, Jamie, you know, if we don't have it, we're, we're just kind of interested, if we cannot have the event, how, how that money will be used going forward, or how we could, could give that back to the community or the city somehow to, to benefit us as a whole.
Yeah, I understand. I think that, you know, after, if we're not able to, I think that's something that we could come and present to council of what our plan is to utilize the money, and, and that's up to the council if you feel that that's feasible, or if it needs to go to something that would better benefit.
I had that discussion with the council, I believe, the last meeting, whenever we were talking about, I signed all the contracts. There's a level of expense, Noel, you guys are gonna have before you ever call it off. I mean, you know, you're advertising now as you're gonna go on. And so, there's gonna be a level of expense that is expended, and you, I mean, that money won't ever come back. And I mean, I'm all right with that. I mean, I just want the council to understand, you know, you'll have expenses leading up to the point that we call it off, if that's what you do.
Oh, yeah. I definitely agree, and I appreciate, you know, what you guys are doing by the Give Back program and everything else, too, to try and help out as well.
Yes, we, we have done everything we can, and I think that'll just be, our communication with council is what we are doing. If we're not able to do those events, obviously, we do have those in our contract, but this is just a different year for all of us and everything that we're seeing. I, I think we'll just be in communication with council, showing you how the chamber is serving the community and what we are doing. We do submit our quarterly reports, so we'll continue to do that. And once that decision is made, whether to call off the event or not, we'll be in close contact with Larry as well as the council, just to see what options we have or what needs are in the community that we could serve. That, that was, if you did see, we did the Give Back program. It was just a small way for us to show that we do appreciate our community members. We did not do that members only. We did members and non-members. We couldn't do every member, as much as I would love to give back to every single member, but we felt the restaurants was a good start to show that. And so, there are several chambers that are, are doing different types of programs to support spending local. So, I think there are a lot of things that we could do if we weren't able to do our events, to still provide value and, and really keep our community going and shopping local and supporting those efforts.
Anything else, counsel? Any further discussion? We do have a motion and a second on the floor.
Thank you, Noel.
You're welcome.
One last call for discussion. Roll call, please.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Dealbeck.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Moral.
Yes.
Wines.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes. Thank you, counsel. Item 18. Is there any new business that needs to come before the council this evening? Seeing none, we're gonna move to item 19. Before I do this, anyone that's on with us right now, we're going to go into executive session, and you'll be asked to remove yourself, or we will remove you, we'll remove you for yourself. And then, when we come back out of executive session, we will have a five-minute recess for anyone that wants to come back on. We have no way of notifying you. So, if you want to be back on with us after the executive session, you're just gonna have to keep trying and see if we're there or not. So, at this point, item 19. Consider convening the executive session for the purpose of conducting the annual performance evaluation of city manager Larry Pennell pursuant to Title 25, Section 307B1 of the Oklahoma statutes as amended.
Make the motion to convene into executive session.
Second, Moral.
Roll call, please.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Dealbeck.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Moral.
Yes.
Wines.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes. At this time, I would like to ask...
All right, Council, I would like a motion on item 20 to reconvene in the regular session.
So moved.
Second.
Take one of them, Dixie. Roll call, please. I guess I should ask if Dixie was back. I'm sorry, Dixie.
That's okay. You were rushing me, but we're there.
Tyson said you was fine.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Deal back.
Yes.
Hi, Hearn.
Yes.
Moral.
Yes.
Wines.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes. Okay, we will be standing in a five-minute recess before we go on.
The seven cases that you said that came back to Noble County, is there any discussion about where that's coming from?
Hey, hang on, guys. We're live. Yeah, Red Rock, Jamie. Okay, our five minutes is up. So, item 21, take any action with respect to executive session. Seeing none, item 22, any new business that needs to come before the council this evening? Item 23, motion on adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Moral.
Roll call, please.
Hold on.
Yes.
Bond.
Yes.
Deal back.
Yes.
Hi, Hearn.
Yes.
Moral.
Yes.
Wines.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes. Thank you, Council, and good night.